This conference will now be recorded.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The fourth quarter business will be on local law three dash two zero three three regarding community taxes tax exemption. Chuck Camino, would you please read the notice?
Please. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Placid will hold two public hearings on Monday, October sixteenth, two twenty twenty-three at four forty-five P M and four fifty P M in person at North Elbit Town Hall, twenty-six ninety-three Main Street, first floor, Lake Placid, New York, and via video conference to consider the following. Proposed local law number three of twenty twenty-three, a local law to amend local law number two of nineteen ninety-seven and local law number three of two thousand and seven to modify the maximum eligibility and to redefine income for partial exemption from taxation of real property owned by persons sixty-five years of age or older. Proposed local law number four of twenty twenty-three, a local law authorizing real property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance service workers. The link for the video conference will be the same as for that day's board meeting and available on the village website. A complete copy of these proposed local laws may be found on the village website at northelbit.villageoflakeplacid.ny.gov, or you may obtain a copy by emailing the village clerk at lpclerk@villageoflakeplacid.ny.gov. All interested persons are invited to participate in the public hearing and will be given an opportunity to be heard. This local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Sign Anita A.S. by village clerk.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure who private is, but is there any questions you'd like to ask or bring up at this public hearing?
Sure.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Give it a few more minutes. The timing of all this, this, once we do approve or whatever happens with this, will not go into effect until our next budget year, is that correct?
Correct.
So, nothing till next obvious version would that be? Did anyone here, town's already gone through this, correct? And or the school has, I know, did the town do it yet?
The school just did emergency. In brave.
First responders?
Right.
The school did veterans and first responders, they're bringing the senior citizen one, but not until November. So they've like received a presentation about it, but it hasn't been on their agenda.
Thanks. Get your place to table. She didn't run, most people do when I offer that. Can I have two meetings going at once? Our public hearings?
No, you got both on the way.
You have one more. Well. We kept the paperwork for you.
Good, okay.
What's this?
Let's give it a minute. A word, Pat, since we wait to start.
Oh, okay.
Listen to you. Those came off the other part of it.
That's right.
Are those snowflakes?
Yeah, no, wishful thinking. Yeah, I think they're abstract flower, I think.
Okay, just checking. I didn't want me to go into depression over there. I'm just waiting. Okay, I'll go for it.
I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Now I got to open the first one. Now we will open the public hearing for the volunteer firefighter's and ambulance service tax exemption. You've already read that, right?
Yeah, it was a combined.
Any questions now?
You just mentioned, so if you vote to approve this, it wouldn't go into effect until the next budget?
Till our next budget season, right?
Okay.
We, the law allowing us to do this came out, but there wasn't enough time to get the description out and get everything out in time for our, our, like they gave us one month or something like that.
Yeah, plus anybody who, the exemption has to file documents with the assessment office and the assessment is already, so we're in the process.
Were you in town? So it'll be for the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
And you've probably already learned that they saw three of the village's lawyers will solve.
Oh, Sarah.
But the town, or they should be coming up.
Yeah.
Whenever they pass it.
Yeah, as long as they pass it, it'll be, it's already out, but depends on if they had time to get the paperwork and, or the people had time to apply for the exemption.
Right, right. And the school, they probably won't have enough time.
There's won't be until next September.
But what is the, is there, did they do away with the STAR?
No.
No.
So.
It's an addition.
It's an addition, so, okay.
Is there anybody at home or online with us that would like to ask any questions or make any comments during this second public hearing?
Yes, I have a comment. Just wanting to know, is this going to be considered taxable income from a federal level for the volunteers that are eligible for this benefit? Have we looked into that and is, is there good, good information in that?
I don't think we're, any of us are the accountants that can actually answer that.
Taxable income? It's just a reduction in the assessed value of the homes, you don't pay as much in taxes on the home.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's an exchange, it's an exchange for services, even though they are volunteer services, so it's a theoretical compensation. So if we look at that same thing, if we were to add someone on a, that was eligible onto a health insurance plan for someone that's working for a company, that would be considered taxable income on a federal level. So I'm just bringing that up as a point, you might want to take a look at that. So you're not giving them benefits and, you know, it might, it might turn them into a slightly higher tax bracket if they take this, so it would in fact penalize them if, if that were the case, we don't want to have that happen.
I will take that into advisement and look into it.
Didn't this come down from the government?
Yeah, it did, yeah.
Albany's not Washington.
True.
What, what about health insurance? That's not something taxable to a citizen employee?
No, it comes out of free tax.
So I would think this would fall, you can't hurt to look into it.
Well, and the exemption's not state, on a federal level, so the current volunteer exemption is state-owned, so doesn't affect federal taxable wages.
What year was this building built?
Nineteen thirty-five.
When we read it, our section, this is nothing.
No, you can't hear if you walk on ice.
No, I mean, there's no insulation.
Oh, no. But now that we have carpet, you can hear it.
Yeah, that's true, that's kind of made a big difference, doesn't it?
We're just, that was Tracy walking to the leisure, or walking to the hole. She's doing her own appeals on that floor right now, you can always hear her.
You can always tell Ellen Clark when she can, she's very distinct.
Yes.
What's a World Series start? Last night started the division series, so you've got seven games, so ten days. Which is a beautiful cut.
Tell them how baseball.
Well, Arizona's the Ranger team.
What tenuous, like classic connection with the Diamondbacks? Is that right? You probably know the connection. There's that Marty Stone.
Oh, yes. He was the, he had the Farm Team.
Angels, yeah, something like that.
For the mayor, he had the Farm Team.
Arizona, was that the Angels, was that the name of it?
Yeah, I think they were, they were associated with the Diamondbacks, which is why they moved from here to Arizona.
I was telling the story at a school, but Martin flew out to Arizona in his conquest to the jet prop, he had Gary Silverstein owned, and Steve flew him out to Syracuse and they were supposed to pick him up, and all of a sudden he came back. And on the way back, the weather was bad, and all of a sudden the flight got diverted and had delayed in Syracuse. So got on the ground, we were running through a payphone to try to call Steve and have him to locate him and come pick him up, and it was Steve waiting for him. He had just taken him there and went back there, so Steve had an eyeliner, it didn't work out.
So you want a motion now?
Two wanted, I have to go until, we'll give it to one then before I need to put it on the media. Listen for the town hall clock to strike, it's official. They always say Indian summers during the World Series, so we'll move some more and more then. Saw the infamous picture up in the acronyms, it's a big part. Why that all worked out?
I guess.
We're going to expect you to give us a fifteen-minute dissertation on your trip overseas.
Okay.
What you said sounded like a good trip, Nelson.
It was, it was, you know, one of those trips that you're over, it starts out small and then it ends up bigger as you go, and you might as well do one thing at a time. And, well, the group, so different people did different things, so, and it was family and friends, so we knew mostly everything, and so it was good.
Lots of good food, I hear.
Yeah, the food's good, actually, the food's good, the buildings were amazing, the history of the buildings was just amazing.
I'm with you, Anita, lots of good food.
I know. So was his dog, she must have got food, not architecture.
Okay, well, we got a bunch of people here, if there is nobody else here that has any comments during our public hearing, I'll ask for a motion to close.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then at this point, we will move right into our regular board meeting, and we'll start right out with proposed law number three dash two zero two-three, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Accept.
The senior citizens tax exemption.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So passed, and item B, closed law four dash two zero two-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice. Item C, regular board meeting minutes on October second.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments or corrections? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Item D, the power authority renewal agreement, I believe this is just standard and we.
Thirty annual, or well, we do it, I was three to five, depending on the power authority, but it's just for our allocation.
Okay. A motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, bid recommendation, fifteen K V tables. Anything you'd like to say on that, or is it pretty straightforward?
Pretty straightforward, we met with the overnight gentleman and it was the best bet.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As well. L P P D sergeant promotion.
Oh, wait.
Main street planning.
Main, main street.
Main street.
Planning.
Yeah, and I have the numbers on that if anyone wants to look at it, it was last minute addition to the agenda, so I didn't have that to include.
Oh, mine doesn't have it.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, take that, the one in your boxes.
I have it. So, Jim Gerard is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was my new update.
You want to take a look, it's my own copy, so.
So we will go back now to item F, there's a bid recommendation to Main Street plantings, does everyone have a chance to take a look at those? Any questions or concerns?
And they were already bid on it, so it's not like we're choosing between any, and it was basically the same as last year.
This one is a three-year contract.
Right.
Once you added up all the things that were figured out last year, a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, I guess we're just moving over to the.
I think there might be one more.
It's okay.
Surplus.
I just get rid of this one. Okay, and then item G, J.J. Kane auction for surplus, which is?
We had some cars, I think, that were auctioning off.
Yeah, an oh-nine Chevy fifteen-hundred pickup, two ten-cole input snowplows, oh-seven Kubota tractor with broom, and oh-nine Kubota tractor with plow, a twenty-thirteen Elgin Street Sweeper's truck, that's it.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Now we'll get down to the Lake Placid Police Department Sergeant promotion.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, would anyone like, Anita, can you give us particulars on that?
This is Patrolman Patrick Kane, asked to be promoted, well, Chuck, Chuck Thompson is asking for promoting to Sergeant during his time with L P P D. Patrolman Kane has demonstrated strong skills in all aspects of police work, been an invaluable member of our team. I'm confident that Patrolman Kane will make a good supervisor and continue to be an asset to the department in his role. According to the current Essex County Civil Service list, he is eligible for the position, his salary would be in accordance with the collective bargaining unit's current contract. That is all.
Good, thank you.
Sure. And budget was, okay. Oh, yeah, we have two sergeants in the budget, perfect.
Motion to accept, I make the motion.
I'll second.
Sorry, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then item I is third-class lineman, step three promotion, one of.
No, the first one is Noah Tavoris. He'd be getting promoted to third-class lineman, step three, at a period of thirty-four seventy-four per hour. As of November fourth, he will have his eighteen months from date of hire as third-class lineman, and it is at Kimball's request. He has successfully completed his first year of school.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the second one is basically the same details, different person, Jacob Corson. Request is to make him third-class lineman, step three.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to all of our village employees that have been promoted. Item K is Lake Placid Film Forum banner?
Yes, there's like twenty of them along Main Street, it's a slightly last-minute request because the festival, well, the festival starts next week, they'd like them to go out this week, I already gave Kimball a heads-up on it, so it's fine with his department, it's fine with all of you.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And then item L, Empire State Winter Game Proposal, I believe that is the presentation from the workshop that Craig Boilberry gave us, and it's not our final proposal, but it's just go ahead to proceed with a run-of-show.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Janet, since you're on, just so you know, I asked all the questions you had during the presentation, and they answered them to the board's satisfaction, so, like the mayor says, we're, we're moving ahead with approving it, and they will give us more details to come.
I think it should be clear, it's conceptual approval, subject to details.
Okay.
Subject to a run-of-show, yes. Okay, item M, songs at Mirror Lake, twenty twenty-four?
I'll make the motion, except the band, the scheduling, the banners, and the normal request.
I'll second.
Is there anything you'd like to add before we?
Nobody have any questions, it's, you know, it's basically the same thing we've been doing every year, moving into our eighteenth season, so.
Wow. I don't have any questions, just thank you for the effort.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do have one request. If the, if the garbage can be picked up in the afternoon on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at the park, because especially during camp, Ironman and lacrosse, they're just overflowing, and it doesn't make a good representation of the park.
We have more staff on now that handles that for the summer, so it shouldn't be an issue. We have two additional Main Street people that.
Right now, we'll hope by next year we still have, right?
Well, we'll have.
Yeah, we actually emptied the garbage ourselves and put in.
Thank you for that.
Because we knew there would be more, so, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Item N, Lake Placid volunteer fire department membership application?
This is for Jonathan Witt, he has passed through the departments, he's a junior firefighter, he's still in.
He's very nice. Yes. I'll make the motion to accept the application of Jonathan Witt.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we all just have songs in their lake, set up and recount.
He's a great kid.
Yes, a junior firefighter. I can see him really do, explore, he's an explorer.
And we all know that volunteer fire departments across the country can all use any people who are interested, thank you, thank you very much for his interest. Is there anything else?
One more thing came in today that was emailed to the two of us, the request for the Veterans Day parade, Saturday, November eleventh, it would be the usual step-off at number one Main Street at eleven A.M., ceremonies at the posts to follow at approximately eleven-twenty, and I spoke with Chuck, and the department is on board, they have no problem with any of this, so, again, your pleasure, starting at eleven A.M., the three steps offs, I assume they'd have to shut the street down just shortly before then.
Normally, I don't like to bring anything to you that we haven't given you time to look at, but hopefully this is pre-routine, it's a good cause, so, if I can have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anything else?
No, that is all.
Okay. Treasury items, warrant affidavits number six. Who is going to be able to lift them over? Just thank you again for your time and effort. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, anything else come from treasury? Okay. Anything on the new business? Okay, how about old business? Okay, in that case, we'll go to mayor items. I did receive one correspondence from the Lake Placid Classic. It is, Dear Mayor and Village Board, October seventh, twenty twenty-three, the fifty-second annual Lake Placid Classic Half Marathon, ten K was successfully completed. On behalf of Lake Placid Classic Event Team, I would like to thank the Village of Lake Placid for their continued support for this event. Even though a small portion of the event takes place in the village, the village staff participation affects the entire event. I would like to give a special thank you to Brad Hathaway, Chief Dobson, Sergeant Lynn, and Justin Roy, and Brady Hayes. Without their assistance, this event would not have been possible. This year's weather proved particularly challenging for the volunteers, but all emerged dry and pleased with the event. This year, nearly four hundred participants braved the heavy rains and completed their half marathon, or ten K. We were pleased to have five hundred and fifty preregistered participants, which allowed us to contribute to the students at Lake Placid Central High School and Fit for Life program, as we will be donating over seventeen thousand. This brings our eleven-year total donation to local youth to around one hundred and twenty-six thousand. Thank you for your continued support of this event and keep the event a true classic. A source of funding for local organizations. Sincerely, Rick Preston, Volunteer Race Director. Special thank you to Rick for keeping this race alive for all these years and for the give back to the community.
I can think of that, thank you.
Okay, nothing else to come under mayor items? Anything from trustee reports? I guess trustee, that would be liaison reports? Okay. I'm sure one big thing happening is Halkins Sam's going to start.
Yeah.
Under public comments or press questions, does anybody online have any questions for the village board?
Yeah, I have a few.
Oh, wait, you can't once. Scott, why don't you go ahead first?
Okay, thank you for your time here answering my question. I do want to follow up on my questions with the recent emergency room closure. My question to the village board is what are the village's plans moving forward with providing emergency room care to its residents and others? Are other healthcare providers an option if Andorondak Health remains unwilling to provide emergency room care to residents and tourists within the Olympic Village of Lake Placid? Thank you.
I think the answer to both those questions, Scott, would be that my understanding is that Hudson Headwaters is in the process of trying to get approval from the Health Department to move into where the emergency room was and provide walk-in service. As we all know, how long that took for the hospital originally, it was on the order of about eight months, they'd hoped it would be seamless with a closing and opening, but that has not been the speed of the Health Department. And as far as in the meantime, I think the only answer for you is that there is a very good emergency room in Saranac Lake, not that far a drive from here.
And just to follow up to that, I'm just curious if you've had any communication, obviously, it sounds like there's been some exemptions to the volunteer ambulance, but how that's impacted their nonprofit organization having to go from the Olympic Village here to another village over to provide care to the residents here? Has that conversation happened at all?
That happened way back when the first talk of a closure happened, but yes, we've just had to react to it, and so have they. It also affects our police department, it affects the ambulance, as you pointed out, pretty much affects everybody. It's, it's what we have to deal with, and that's, that's what's in, that's what's working out.
All right, thank you for taking the time to answer.
Scott, private, go ahead.
Yes. The laws that you put into effect today, there's two other laws that correspond with the volunteers and the, and the seniors, that is, one is veterans, and the other is those with disabilities and having limited income. Is the board going to be putting hearings together for both of those groups as well?
We're working on local projects as soon as we have them ready to come to a public hearing, yes, we are.
Perfect, thank you. That is all I have, actually.
Very good.
I have a question. I was under the impression that the Village of Lake Placid already offered the veterans exemption?
No, that's my knowledge.
Okay, that's fine, I just got.
Like we were talking, there's what, the STAR program? And is there also a senior exemption for that part of the STAR?
No, there's a senior exemption currently, we just updated the senior exemption, and then we've added the volunteer fire department's exemption. We had had conversation at one point about veterans, it just had.
And disabled?
Yes.
Okay.
Before you, I understand, before you can go to a public hearing, you have to have the law that you're looking to pass, and I don't believe that's finalized yet.
No.
That's what's holding up there.
We're working with the assessment.
Are there any other programs you can think of?
No, it's out of my head, no.
And we're, just saying that we're being proactive with this, because it's not going to go into effect until next year. So it gives us time, instead of in July or June, we'll hope to get this done. So we have time and we're going to look at it, so.
So we have time and we're going to look at it, so not a rush, okay.
Janet, is there anything else you would like to bring to the board tonight, or?
No, I, I don't have anything for the board tonight.
Okay, if that is the case then, set the motion to adjourn, make the motion, adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks everyone for their time.
Thank you, have a good night. Not even 20 after 5.